Bylaw eleven forty-eight in nineteen sixty-one in accordance with the Public Libraries Act, which was amended by bylaw eighty-nine dash eighteen to establish the composition of the library board. And whereas the municipal act and the Public Libraries Act have been updated since establishing provisions were set. And whereas council for the corporation of the town of Cobalt has adopted a bylaw endorsing a move forward strategy, having determined that it is in the best interest of the town to modernize in an effort to become more effective and efficient in its delivery of service. And whereas council believes it is in best interest of the town to update the bylaw establishing the library board. Now therefore be resolved that council for the town of Cobalt directs as follows. One, that the town manager draft an update by law establishing a library to be presented to council at the February committee of the whole meeting, which shall include: One-one, the composition of the library board to be an odd number, minimum of five, maximum of nine. Members up to three of whom shall be members of council. One-two, please refrain from any noise. One-two, all services the town will provide to the library. One-three, ethical and administrative practices required of the board and the employees, volunteers of the library. One-four, reporting relationship between the library and the town. And one-five, the process council will undertake to appoint library board members. Two, that the library board appointed from the twenty-two term of council remain in place until the new library board is struck and that this will be a period of transition. Three, that the library board shall, chair prepares a report for council outlining all urgent matters currently under consideration by the library board. Four, that council will undertake the following process for the appointment of the new library board. Four-one, candidates who have already submitted their name will be interviewed by council at an open meeting using predetermined questions. Four-two, questions will be circulated to candidates prior to the meeting for them to prepare their responses. Four-three, candidates will be rated on their responses to each question by each member of council. Four-four, the town manager shall record each of the ratings and then calculate the average for each candidate. And four-five, the top candidates will be appointed as a library board for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-six council term. Can I get a mover on that, please?
We have to have a mover in second.
Yeah.
No, we don't need that guy on the table.
Oh.
Just a couple changes, Brian.
No mover. Hot, are you moving?
No, if your opinion is it goes on the table, we don't move in second, okay.
Don't be coaching anybody.
Please skip down the.
Draft up another letter.
Draft motion, whereas council for the corporation of the town of Cobalt established a public library by adopting bylaw eleven forty-eight in nineteen sixty-one in accordance with the Public Libraries Act, which was amended by bylaw eighty-nine dash eighteen to establish the composition of the library board. And whereas the municipal act and the Public Libraries Act have been updated since establishing provisions were set. And whereas council for the corporation of the town of Cobalt has adopted a bylaw endorsing a move forward strategy, having determined that it is in the best interest of the town to modernize in an effort to become more effective and efficient in its delivery of service. And whereas council believes it is the best interest of the town to update the bylaw establishing the library board. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the town of Cobalt directs as follows. That the town manager drafted an updated by law establishing a library to be presented to council at the February committee of the whole meeting, which shall include: The composition of the library board be an odd number, minimum of five, maximum of nine. Members up to three of whom shall be members of council. Item one-two, all services the town will provide to the library. Item one-three, ethical and administrative practices required of the board and the employees and the volunteers of the library. Item one-four, reporting relationship between the library and the town. And item one-five, the process council will undertake to appoint the library board members. That an interim board of directors composed of a number of members, five members, and that this will be a period of transition. Three, that the library board conducts regular routine business only during the transition period and specifically that there will be no hiring or dismissal of any employee prior to passing the updated by law. Two, that there will be no disposition of any real or personal property which has a value exceeding five hundred dollars at the time of dismissal. Three-three, that there will be no expenditures or incurring any other liability which exceeds five hundred dollars. Item four, that the library board chair prepares a report for council outlining all urgent matters currently under consideration by the library board. Item five, that council will undertake the following process for the appointment of the new board. Five-one, candidates who have already submitted their name will be interviewed by council at an open meeting using predetermined questions. Five-two, questions will be circulated to candidates prior to meeting for them to prepare their responses. Five-three, candidates will be rated on their response to each question by each member of council. Five-four, the town manager shall record each of the ratings and then calculate the average for each candidate. And five-five, the top candidates will be appointed as the library board for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-six council term. Can I get a mover on that, please? Doug. Can I get a second on that? Angela. Discussion on that?
I'd like to change the word here. The first part where it says who shall be, or who shall be, what number? That's the first one.
Do you want one?
One, one.
Yep.
Of who shall be, I like to say who can.
Maybe.
Not so it's not three for sure, it's up to three.
Okay.
Maybe do anything, your hands turn, an interim.
Just the two members of council, but the up to three is the afterpart.
Yeah, it's the shall. And it should be me. I'm just having a problem with the predetermined, the one number one, I guess it is, the predetermined questions. If they're sitting in front of us, why can't we just like ask them what we feel we need to know rather than predetermined? Like I just don't, I don't like, don't like it.
Doug.
I think that's there because we want to get all of the candidates to be in the field and be able to have a, if we're all asking them the same questions, can we ever evaluate their answers? If we ask them a variety of different questions, I just want to evaluate that.
So there's no real correct answer, then they could give us this as like, it's just like.
Oh no, generally we watch for your color, but I want to see if they say with enthusiasm or if they're not sure. You know, I don't know, but no, you don't have to be.
Angela?
I think it's also important for it to be predetermined so that we know that they're appropriate and so that everybody knows what they're going to be ahead of time and we're not blindsiding them with something that is maybe inappropriate question that we haven't been coached on because who's going to control them, who creates and asks the questions? So, there could be something really pointed that could put somebody on the hot speed, which would be inappropriate. But now we know in advance what those questions can be and they're vetted by our council so that we're not asking questions that some people might actually not want to answer.
Karen?
Thank you. I'd like to maybe know how many questions per person we're planning on asking? Like is it going to be five, six, ten? I don't want it to look like an interrogation on our behalf. So I'd like to know maybe is it going to be two questions, three questions, five questions? Or a rough idea, whether it's two or three, maybe three or four, is it going to be ten or fifteen or twenty or two?
Remember, these people are volunteers, they're not getting paid for this. We want to interrogate them.
I know that with the city of Timiscamishores, you fill out a form and there are set questions. So, the fact that we're doing them openly is maybe because people want transparency instead of just getting them to do like.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Not nobody is going to get to see the answer to. And if you don't have preset questions, then it actually is more of an interrogation where we can suddenly have a back and forth. So if there are questions like, what is your interest in the board? No, we need somebody who does accounting, we need somebody who has these skills. Like which of these skills do you bring to the table? It is like a job interview because they have actual responsibilities and legal responsibilities on the board. So, we need to choose people who have the ability to meet those legal responsibilities.
Volunteers are volunteers, if not.
Please skip down the.
And then volunteers are.
Excuse me, next time you'll be out with me, next time you'll be out with me.
Whatever.
Oh.
Go to hell.
Oh. Please call the cops.
Then call the cops.
Forget it.
I'm not dealing with this. There's no transparency.
There's nothing there.
I do.
We're a joke. This whole thing is a lie, we're a joke. You keep arguing. Totally lost. And you are the biggest loss. We're people that are happy. I guarantee it.
Any further discussion?
I'd just say in my part that with everything we do with legal, this would be good and we won't be, you know, we'll be finding the questions I had at time as a group. And I think that's a fair way to do it, to find the right people.
The right people.
Now, do you from board?
I'd like to reinstate the board that was there originally. The wording that we used is the lame duck or the intern, just because we're working on a new one in the next few weeks. So I'd like to reinstate the ones that were there that kindly donated their time and move forward with the previous meetings for our new appointments and everything else. So I'd like to reestablish that like nothing happened.
If we do reestablish that, I'd like to see them under the same restrictions as an intern were. It's just a different number of employees or a different number of volunteers.
Can't hire and fire.
Like you mean?
Can't hire or fire.
As an intern, because I don't want to pick to choose tonight which ones I'm staying with.
If we reinstate, they have to be under the same restrictions as an intern. With the five hundred dollars and that's.
Yeah, that's all fine, that's all. That's all end up, yeah, lame duck kind of, for sure. But I want this, I'd like to see the same people, I'm not ready to pick five of them.
Oh, same people.
Angela?
So on your one, that update the bylaw establishing a library to be presented to council on February of the committee of the whole meeting which shall include, I think that we need to adjust that one point one wording to reflect the libraries act that says no more than fifty percent. So, shall be three, but if you have five, then three is more than fifty percent. So it just ask for the libraries act that can't be more than fifty percent. I just, we need to clarify that.
So if I go on that point, the act requires one less than what the constitute form.
Which is what?
So you have five, you need two counselors, if you have seven, you have three counselors. But that's language of the act and that's probably what. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Our, what we're doing tonight is done on advice from our legal counsel and the integrity commissioner. And as you can see from this bylaw, our bylaws are woefully behind the times. And if you know me, I don't like to rush into new bylaws without giving a fairly thorough examination. What I was hoping we might do is have a group of five people who would be fairly neutral, relatively unbiased, who would tackle the question of what constitutes a reasonable bylaw for the operation and the cooperation between the library and council. What the town is going to expect in the way of services, what the library is going to provide in the way of reporting to the town, and just really refine the whole process of how we're intermingling. As it currently stands, we have almost no control over the library board. They can pretty much do what they want to do.
It's the way it's supposed to be.
We're a tolerance. I was on council for ten years and we never micromanaged the library board, we never micromanaged volunteers. We welcomed them, respected them and appreciated them. And you are not doing that. You are far from doing that.
Okay, I disagree with you.
Your mother would roll over. Your mother would. Yes, she would.
No, actually she would.
Oh, yes, she would.
We are here tonight to try and establish a bylaw that sets up how the two bodies relate.
We're here tonight because the mayor stepped out of line and drafted a letter without councils knowing and sent it and then dismissed the volunteer board. That's why we're here tonight, don't confuse it, okay? That's why we're here. And this nonsense just keeps going on and on and on. You can't dismiss us, you can't say it's about control, you can't say it's about reforming a bylaw so you can get more control or more communication. You have a town of nine hundred people here and that bylaw reads like the fucking bylaws down in the city of Toronto.
Counselor Johnson, you're asked to leave right now.
And how much do the lawyer cost us for that?
No, no, I'm done with this.
Not a chance.
We're trying to hear what God has to say because he's trying to.
Doug, I have a simple solution. Why don't you call Timiscamishores Library and ask them how do they elect their board members? Why don't you call them?
Or tomahawk me.
Call them and call tomahawk me. Call our local municipalities, call Inglehart. Get a consensus of how a library board by law or whatever, how you appoint library board members. Do it locally, you know, because they're all working. There's no dysfunctionality, there's no crisis, there's nothing going on in any other library board except ours.
Yes.
So let's consult the ones who are successful. And this was successful until it was dismissed.
Your worship, if you, when I lived in Timiscamishores, I applied to be on the library board and the committee of adjustment. I got appointed to the committee of adjustment and not the library board, but I did fill out the questionnaire stating my interests, motivation, and skills that I would offer the board at the time. And so not every volunteer that applied was accepted. And also, your worship, incredibly, my master's degree looked at volunteerism with environmental organizations, their motivation and the conflict between environmental groups and volunteers and their motivation and when they worked well and when they moved forward and when there was conflict and a group that would come, a volunteer that would say, I want to do this, I'm going to transform your garden, I'm going to engage and have all these projects that didn't have the resources. And the environmental group that said, we have funding for this and what we really need is somebody to wash our toilets. But nobody was interested in washing the toilets. They wanted to be part of something that the environmental group, in fact, did not have the money to be part of. So volunteers are not always congruent with the needs of an organization. You don't take a hundred percent of volunteers that come forward, you take as many as you need, which is why there's a limit to the number of people on the library board and not forty people who are interested. And that you choose skills that you need to run the organization and it's not just a desire to help because you can volunteer, putting books on the shelves, being trained to do things without necessarily running the board. So your worship, I would like to ask that we continue to look at this draft motion so that those who are interested in volunteering can approach the librarian and volunteer in a way that the library needs, they might need somebody to wash the toilets and in a way that we can actually move forward. Thank you.
My question is, if one of fifty people applied to be nominated for the library board, how long is this council going to be interviewing people until March? You know, and how long is the interview going to be being? It's ridiculous, it's useless, it's unnecessary. I agree, Angela, a little questionnaire, a little, you know, about interest and a little background and stuff that can be handed in to council and they can take a look at it and they can move forward. But there's absolutely no need to have someone stand in front of you and, you know, and answer questions or whatever. I mean, that vetting is just absolutely ridiculous. It's unnecessary, it's absolutely unnecessary and way too complicated for a library board of a thousand. I know you need to do some due diligence, do a little bit of due diligence, but simplify the frigging process. This process is complicated and it's out of control and it's unnecessary.
Maggie?
Mayor Gibson, why did you fire us?
Unfortunately, I can't speak to that.
Why? Why did you fire us? Why did you fire us? Why did you let us go? Transparency and.
Hidden agenda.
That's right.
Yes.
What did we do?
Why do we accept it as is with no reason?
My decision was made with advisement from the integrity commissioner and the municipal lawyer and that's what I can say.
Oh, come on.
Oh, you're bringing in the integrity commissioner, okay.
Are we being charged with something? Have we done something wrong?
Well, we'll have integrity commissioners already.
Why would you hold that statement? Did you?
I guess the integrity commissioner knows the Public Libraries Act because Maggie just wrote a letter to the speaker and got an opinion, eh? And it said that, no, you don't fire the library board, you don't dismiss the library board.
You're right.
So, and you put in that letter to the board that according to the act, you were allowed to do that. Well.
It's illegal.
Maggie, don't.
It's illegal.
You're not.
It's illegal, but the council does not have the right to run the library. We are an independent board that's run under the library act.
That was a legal move, throwing these, these good people under the bus.
I believe that we can solve this problem by coming to a recommendation and appointing interim board. So if we, there was a recommendation that it be five, there's a recommendation that we appoint the old board. Maybe we can approve the draft motion with that aside. The council sergeant can vote on the rest of it and then we can come back to who this interim board will be composed of. Can I propose that? Like right now?
None. Nothing.
Exactly, so I'm asking if we can.
They're neutering the board. There's no power.
That we will be composed of something and then the second step will be.
Not my mayor. Not my mayor. This is bullshit.
So you're saying don't have this motion? Because this motion is putting this limited powers in place.
It's stuck a little bit of this and a little bit of that, so it's hard to, it's hard to really.
Well, no, like make those changes, propose the changes that are missing a little bit more of that. We'll propose them and then accept them and then move on.
All right, well, that's what I want, I want the board reinstated. Lame duck status, the end of the term, that that board will be dissolved within a few weeks, a month, when we get our things ready and then that's it. Just the sixty days.
I'm not going to get volunteers.
Did I understand that there was going to be a limit on the powers that we would have to conduct our business? I missed, I couldn't hear some of the conversation.
There is some that's being discussed. I don't know if it's because of the worries of spite, maybe, that something crazy is going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
Oh, definitely.
That's why we got a, that's why we're going with the lame duck type situation. So you can't order in a million dollars for the books or something crazy.
If we can't, if we can't conduct our business, then we can't, we don't have the authority to be a library board. And without a board, there's no library.
So, the motion three states that the library board conducts regular routine business only during the transition period and specifically that there will be no hiring or dismissal of any employee prior to passing the updated by law. There will be no disposition of any real or personal property which has value exceeding five hundred dollars at the time of dismissal. Okay, right, of sales, that's what I mean. There will be no expenditures or incurring any other liability which exceeds five hundred dollars. And this is for the interim council only until a new council is appointed.
I have another question for the mayor, please. On Monday, the last week, I was telephoned and emailed to attend a meeting at the library with you, Counselor Wilcox and the librarian. I was unfortunately not available to attend at your request and moreover, you do not have the authority to ask me to attend a library business. I do not speak to you, I do not report to you. I however would like to know what was the nature of that meeting?
Unfortunately, I don't have an appropriate.
Why not? You called it.
No transparency.
You called the meeting.
It was an attempted mediation, which would be the second time.
About what?
The second time mediation.
Second time?
Yes.
No, I was never, I never went for the first time. This stinks, it stinks to high heaven.
Yeah, it does.
There's lies, there's deception.
Zero transparency.
Zero transparency, it is a power play.
It's a hidden agenda.
It's a hidden agenda.
Madam Mayor, may I ask, please?
Hold on.
Why this came up initially? I think all of us sitting here would like to know, this came out of the blue. Why did this come up?
And why did the counselors not know about it?
I can't speak to that, we do it confidentially, I really can't.
Oh, that's bullshit.
Responsibility to tell the break payers, we are the ones that you're supposed to be there for.
Absolutely.
We would like to know why you made this decision.
Absolutely. I can't, I can't.
Let us, let us hear it absolutely. You're using the taxpayers on what you're doing on our behalf?
Unfortunately, I can't speak.
Paying the lawyer to come here tonight on our dime to do your business behind closed session is not transparency and accountability. And we thought CTV had a public relations nightmare on our hands. When they fired Visa Laflamme, you guys are the same thing. And people are laughing at this, they're not laughing, they're just appalled at this whole thing all over the north and how this has unfolded. And this is not the way we do business in Cobalt. We have never done business like this with our volunteers. And I was on council for ten years and we respected our volunteers.
Until we get to the origin of this idea, we will never understand why we're here. And that's the only, that's the point of, who wanted this change? Who wanted to disrupt the status quo? The status quo was working, it was a success. There was no scandals, there was no official complaints. Where was the evidence that this good board, good people, volunteers, was doing something wrong? And for the next four years, with your, your council would be going off the rails, you know? They weren't. They're just doing their job as good volunteers, as good people in this town. And they should never have been thrown under the bus and there should be an apology to them. Because. And they, they deserve an apology and now you're trying to reinstate them with conditions? You still don't trust them? You think they're going to spite you?
There is absolutely zero trust.
You know?
Zero trust.
Absolutely zero trust. There should be no conditions, they should be reinstated as is because there is no evidence that they did any wrongdoing.
Thank you, Dave.
Or they betrayed you.
Good people. Good decent Cobalters.
Thank you.
Good people. Come on, please.
So how would council like to progress?
So Madam Mayor, what you're telling us is that it's none of our business.
Not a chance.
Why this came up? Is that what you're saying, Madam Mayor?
You have my answer.
It's none of our business, so rerate payers don't mean dickel. Yeah, you don't have to pay our taxes then. There you go.
Can you speak up, please?
That here, yeah, we can as a group agree to or tweak them a bit more?
Well, that's what I said, reinstate the board, as if it didn't happen, since it was illegal. It's not the use of those words, but it shouldn't have happened in the first place.
It was illegal, proper words.
The council did not vote on it, so as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't exist. Reinstate the board. Reinstate the board and-
As is how it was.
We'll work on the new stuff later.
I would rather you didn't use the word reinstate, because that implies that our status was in question. Find another word.
Tear up the letter.
Apologize.
Apologize and acknowledge that you were acting in contravention of the Public Library Act.
Also, could you work in consult, consultation with the library board? I think there's a win-win situation here in the future.
Dave, please.
Eh? Where you could present some proposals to the library board, you know, about maybe changing the composition of the board, like you said in the letter or whatever, you could bring some new members on, no big deal, you know? And work with them, consult with them, I mean, that's, you know?
Thank you, Dave.
Eh, you know? I think that might help, eh?
I would like that, I'm all for, we're going to update the bylaws to bring them into the century. So we're gonna, you know, and work on that and that should be a committee thing, not strictly council. It should be a committee thing, members of the public as well as members of council or whoever, whoever is best suited to do it, let's put it that way. Every once in a while, I open my mouth, so you have to listen. Um, yes, I would like it to go back that the board continue on. It isn't, it is going to be an interim solution until we have this new bylaw and work everything out with the library board with-
No, 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 no.
So according to order, Council Anderson, in all respect, when you're talking, other people can't be telling you no. This isn't, this isn't a public debating situation, you're talking and you in fact don't have to, they're not your coaches. Okay? So I'm hearing that many of you would like to scratch out that how the candidates will be selected. In the interim, we don't have to decide today, Your Honor, how those will be selected. So can I propose an amendment, we're not voting on the motion, but an amendment to the motion to remove how these people are selected, so that's page two, the other side. What, so five?
Five?
All of section five, how people undertake the process, I think we decide it at a later date, can I propose? And does anybody want to speak to that change that I'm proposing, to strike it?
I'm happy with it.
Council, look up.
No questions.
Just a point of order, we should have the original motion on both before we try to amend it.
So, so just, did we not prepare some, hey, Mr. Speaker of the motion?
Yeah, we're debating the motion, we've got it on the-
So I'm making an amendment. Yes, yes.
Okay.
He doesn't even know what planet he's on.
Okay, so, yes.
Could I continue with what I was trying to say?
This is embarrassing.
I don't know, spit it out, right? Wanted to go back to the original board. And on my part, I had no knowledge of what happened and I don't think most of the rest of the council did. So, but on the part of council, I'd like to apologize for what happened and- And it's a lesson that we have to go forward and all work together and know what's going on ahead of time. I, 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 I understand and why it happened and why it happened so fast. I don't like that it did though, okay? Sorry, um-
Why did it happen so fast? We don't know, we don't understand.
Okay, let's move on, okay, can we move on and get this-
So if you amend, the vote-
No.
We're proposing an amendment.
Point of order, please, order.
So I'm proposing an amendment to remove point five, does anybody want to-
Sorry, which one?
My, I am amending, so I'm motion to amend, so I'm not the motion, it's a motion to amend removing point five, which is how the people will be selected. That can be decided at a later date, does anybody want to disagree?
Get rid of it.
So, Judge, I have a second here to my motion to remove point five. Thank you. Any further discussion? Can we pass the amendment to remove point five?
All in favor?
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so Gary, sorry.
Continue, continue.
Councilors would like to propose the limited power, does anybody want to second the motion to remove point three?
Yes, don't do that. This is strictly, you gotta be able to conduct business like that.
So you're gonna second it, then we can discuss it?
Item three, you're talking, Angela, are you the chair?
Yeah!
You're not the chair, why are you guiding this discussion and vote? We have a chair, we have the mayor as the chair.
Order.
So you have a motion or a second motion to wanting to strike three, the limited power, so now we can open it up for discussion or is it another thing?
Very telling.
So.
Very telling.
Yep.
Wow.
I would like to keep this in here because of our discussion with legal counsel, that if, as it is, our bylaw is not restricted enough given the liabilities that the library board can impose on us and past history with different people on the library board, but the library board overextending and then coming to council saying, our budget was overmet and now council had to do something about it. So, while this is a different group of people, it maintains and follows the advice that in fact there should be, in the interim, which is a very short period of time, business as usual, routine business only, like any other lame duck council, and that's all that should be expected from them in the interim. And very shortly, a board of directors, which may be the same people or may not be, hard to say, will then not be strangled by decisions that were made by a very interim board who are just trying to maintain the library. So any other discussion for or against the removal of three? So I'm proposing, I see everyone on a piece, anyone else wants to discuss the topics before we vote on?
I'm sure these people have been doing this for a long time, I don't think they ever worry about them writing an extract for a million dollars or whatever, which we don't have.
Well, then it's not in the-
That's how it's entrusted.
I'm going to agree with Angela, I think the board is a representative, quite common, or interim boards. As you said in our recent example with the council, we became a lame duck council prior to the election so that we couldn't put last things that would tie up the future council. It's the same kind of thing.
But the premier didn't write a limerick, hire a council.
Does it matter if our-
Do you know what the Public Libraries Act says? Order, please, they just cannot make-
Whether or not we had the problem, it's that we are liable and so we're creating a safe space for rules that should be there. So, just because there isn't a speed limit doesn't mean you shouldn't propose one.
That's a complete lack of trust in your volunteers. It's pulling the rug out from underneath them and you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Suppose I discover that the acting CEO librarian has made off with fifteen hundred dollars or she purchased some things that were not approved, she didn't run by us, or that she prepared to go on a conference without running it by the board. These are acts of insubordination, it's theft, and yet we're not supposed to terminate it?
Immediate.
Immediate, immediate.
That's a bullshit.
Dismissed, theft, gone.
Was it more than five hundred bucks?
Yes, it is.
Anybody else like to comment on the motion?
Well, then we can proceed to a vote?
All in favor?
No, 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 just a vote on the removal of point three, sorry, whether or not we remove point three.
All in favor of point three? All?
All in favor of that, so not, not- No, they were removing point three, all in favor of removing point three. So, the motion does not pass the four point eight states.
That's it, that's it. That's why they, that's why that's in there. So this amber might set up, because we get fucking fires.
Any other, must the library change the draft statute before we take it to an ultimate vote?
Business as the usual at the library, would that not be under hiring and firing?
No, three point one then excludes that.
Maybe we should exclude the three point one, we should look at it again.
I think that process in a position of, probably, that's the only-
If this is, this is the first we've heard of this, nobody's told us any of this, but yeah.
I think that it needs to be addressed.
Better call that lawyer back in.
So I had proposed that the changing, sorry, one last proposal change, is that under the one point one, as for the act, Council Wilcox, you had a good wording, that was better than mine.
That members of council may be inclined as not to, to be less than your prior form.
So that up to three, of who? Are you okay with leaving the shower and getting the debate? Okay, so the members of council not to exceed four? Any discussions on that amendment? Can we vote on the amendment to add those words? Thank you. The one point one? Oh, sorry, Uber, Uber, I have my motion, I'll leave it, very much so. Sorry, don't worry. Alright. Thank you, thank you. Any further changes?
Any other discussion on this, please?
The original motion, when you write it out, it was dependent by, so I think we need to clarify that. Okay, so well, so it's five. You got under two? Under two, that the interim board proposed of, dependent said by, so would any of- No, we haven't, you didn't make the motion to say that, and in fact, that's gonna be in the second part.
Yeah, oh, I see, yeah, so we're gonna take out number two.
Okay, so we can discuss that all later, so we will discuss two later, just we're not passing two in our, okay. But that, we will, in essence, we will pass an interim board with the composition to be decided. Dale, can we need to have that written? That- Okay, so then two for now, will be that the interim board and directors shall be appointed. After we make this, like tonight, if you wanted to say who these names shall be. Okay, appointment. Any, anyone wants to second that? I, 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 I'm charged, Starcheck, I suggest that the interim board shall be appointed. For point two, and it's just that for now? Seconded by that? Or actually, it was Council Starcheck, sorry, it was the original motion, I just wanted to bring it up. Thank you.
Do we have a new mayor? Why, why does Angela make all these motions and ask you for a vote? That's your responsibility.
You're a team here.
You're the mayor.
You're doing great.
Oh, yeah.
Where's the motion, make her the chair.
You're not following Robert's rules.
I don't even know who Robert is.
All in favor of changing of the board?
Point two.
Uh, point two. Show of hand?
Yeah, so just be that we appoint the board without designating who it is.
Rushing through this stuff, we need to quickly.
Sorry, show of hands, so I can see. Three.
Dale has the active margin, maybe she should hold it now to that.
Dale, do you have the updated motion?
So we took that part out, it's just that we will reinstate the board under these terms and then my status as board last two, that would-
Just like I said.
That's to be debated in the next step. After, after their first vote. After, after their first vote, of the...
I'll be joining, I'll represent...
Yeah, whether promises are...
It's interim, it's interim, it's interim board, shall you like this?
People are pretty disappointed that this isn't being recorded, Jim.
Gary, order please. Order please. To read the amended motion, now therefore be resolved, the council for the town of Cobalt directs as follows. That the town manager dropped an updated bylaw establishing a library to be presented to the council of the committee community at a whole meeting, which shall include, the composition of the library board be an odd number. Minimum of five, maximum of nine. No less than one, uh, councillor for forum, the white forum. All services of the town will provide, all services to the town will provide to the library. Three ethical and administrative practices required of the board and the employees involved in the library. Four reporting relationship between the library and the town. Five, the process council will undertake to appoint library board members. Item two, that an interim board of directors, directors shall be appointed. Three, that the library board conducts regularly routine business only during the transition period, and specifically that there will be no hiring dismissal of any employees prior to the passing of the bylaw. There will be no disposition of any real or personal property which has a value exceeding five hundred dollars at the time of dismissal. Three point three, that there will be no expenditures or incurring any other liability which exceeds five hundred dollars. We removed item four and removed item five.
So, if we did that, we're gonna buy, didn't we?
Sorry, sorry. Number four, that the library board chair prepares a report. Report for council outlining all urgent matters currently under consideration by the library board. Angela?
I would like to first mention, like, I would like...
Second, first and second, I'm not...
Yeah, move it, thank you, Pat.
I will second.
Todd and Doug.
Any discussion?
On number four?
On, no, on the, the motion now is supposed to be passed.
Are we talking, can I talk about four else, or?
I have no...
I can, I, I want to, I want to, can I ask the chair, if she's pleased with this one, or is she okay with it, or not?
No, that's our decision.
So, okay, that the library board chair prepares a report for council outlining all urgent matters currently under consideration by the library board. I don't think it's unreasonable. So, everybody's good with that?
I think we need to know that in order to decide the skills that we need to report. And any further discussion?
Come on. Can I have a poll on paper? Is that all? Gary, are you with me? No?
What if there are no urgent matters from the library board, how are you going to make those questions up?
Well, then you don't.
Uh, we will stop that.
Through the discussion?
The report says no.
What if there are no urgent matters from the library board, serious urgent matters, how are you gonna make those questions up?
To make a motion that we appoint an interim board of directors?
Can I get a first one, and a second one?
I, I'll do it.
Angela, can I get a second round?
What do you mean a board?
Gary?
Oh, okay. Well, I, well, I guess this to be discussed, uh, what, I, I could put something down, but rather than sway one way or another, uh, that we are now going to discuss the appointing of a board of directors, and how that will be done.
An interim board of directors.
An interim, yes, an interim board of directors, thank you.
Well, first, you weren't trusting the library board, now you're trusting the library board to give you urgent matters, send you urgent matters, you can set up questions.
Order, Dave.
Come on, it's one way or the other.
How would council like to proceed with?
Jim, let's just be first, excuse me.
Jim, sorry.
I was doing a, a keen area interest, concept of interest, I just might, due to my spouse being one of the candidates.
Same. Agreed, I'm gonna be, actually going in.
I don't think you have, you don't have to go out.
Doug? I'm gonna go next, Doug. Please take my chair.
Now we can, now we can see the conflict. Boy, oh, boy. Uh-huh. Why, why does the mayor have a conflict here? Why? Why does the mayor have a conflict?
Because her wife's...
Because her wife's right?
Because her wife is what?
Is a new, a candidate for a...
Oh, of course, there it is, there it is!
There's a damn news, eh?
There we go!
Oh, my goodness, her wife is a candidate!
Whoa!
Oh, my God, what a great surprise for us!
We all heard it.
What an amazing surprise!
Order please.
I knew it, it's a joke.
Order, please. This is a council meeting, I, you guys of all major...
It doesn't resemble one.
The wife, it's the hidden agenda.
Oh, yeah. The mayor's wife? Hey, nepotism is alive in Cobalt! If you don't know that, we're looking up in the dictionary.
Nepotism.
Nepotism is alive in Cobalt.
David, enough, I'm going to ask you to leave if you keep that line up.
Doug, this is an emotional issue. You've seen these people that come out, okay? And I really appreciate that council has allowed us to express ourselves, because if you don't, there's highly educated, highly angry, media, social media savvy people, political influencers. They're gonna leave this meeting tonight, and the town is going to look like a bunch of hicks and fools, you know? So, you better give us some straight answers, and allow us to express our anger, or it is going to be channeled somewhere else publicly.
Okay, David, please leave.
Okay?
CTV.
What's that?
I said, please leave.
You're asking me to leave?
I'm asking you to leave.
Why?
Because you're being disruptive.
Because I told the truth?
No, because you're being disruptive, please leave.
I just...
We're having a meeting.
I just congratulated you for allowing us to speak.
I appreciate that, but you're continuing to interrupt the meeting. Take your seat, my wife. Take your seat, be quiet, so I'll be fine.
No, I don't have to leave.
Oh, my goodness. Circus, they're in town. We're appointing the interim board, and that the current board be, serve as the interim board. Yes.
Is there a secondary for the motion? Seconded by Gary, spread that. Any discussion of the motion?
Do we have the names of the people that are remaining on the board, because there are some people who must just be forced?
Can we get your names of those, of the board that are going to be serving on that interim board? In other words, who's on the board now, because honestly, I don't know everyone that's on the board, because I've never been to one of your board meetings.
Oh, shame on you!
Yes!
I've never been to one of your board meetings.
You don't know who's on your board?
It was on our letter of dismissal, I'm... I never thought, sorry.
Doug Lea is off for the library board, you should call.
Okay.
Maybe they should ask you if you guys are gonna stay on.
Maybe, Wilson. Victoria Starcheck.
Cause that would solve a lot of problems.
Colleen McNaught, Joanne Beeson, Helen Corrane.
No!
And Doug Wilcox.
Ask, ask them if they're gonna stay, cause they don't wanna stay. There's no sense in telling them how to finish the interim board.
This is going to be a win, or... I can't argue with you.
Order please, we're in a council meeting, enough.
Tell Maida her wife's in charge.
Enough, everybody, we're trying to finish this meeting here.
I'm trying to, I'm telling you, I'm not running, you are asking for names, don't put mine down.
Uh, we're, sorry, we're asking for names for who's on the board right now, and who would like to be reinstated?
Okay.
For this, rest of this term.
I don't wanna be re...
Is there anyone that would like to?
No.
No, no, I don't.
You thought yours.
That's leadership!
I have a vote, here, if this keeps up.
Oh!
Yes, Angela.
So, Council Wilcox?
That's all, both.
Council, you have proposed that the original board be reinstated? Uh, it seems like they would not like to be reinstated, so, Council, would you like to rescind?
Yep.
Your motion, okay. So, then, the proposal is that we appoint a board, we already voted and passed the motion that we would appoint the board, so, we will be appointing a board, knowing that those people are no longer interested, and their names are not on the list to be reappointed. Okay, so, then, we need a new list of people to be appointed?
Well, can it not have any exposes or, uh, of anybody that's on council or the mayor? It's a big call for the mayor.
So, make the mayor's wife off.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, I'm okay with it. I, I know what you're saying, uh, but, let us proceed with the series of names, and let's hear it. Uh, do I have a suggestion for who might be on the interim board?
Yes, the remaining names that, can I get anyone I guess is currently on?
Listen up, guys.
We could appoint some people that you are not on. We can appoint them, they don't have to accept.
True enough.
So, we have heard from some names specifically, but I believe it's just Joanne.
That could be applied on the wall in there, what?
I'm just gonna name all the names. Okay, so, given that the library's act requires a minimum of five, um, we should, at the very least, take five names, remaining of the people who just chose to remove their names publicly. Um, there was Colleen McNaught, Joanne Beeson, Doug Wilcox, who is the council representative, and Sabrina Summersaw. I'm going to read all the names, and it's up to us, after that time, to discuss, can we continue? So, there was Jennifer Pereira's name on the list, I don't need any comments on it.
Ah, of course not.
Where'd these names come from?
Nepotism.
These were people who put their names forward, submitted to the executive officer, as expressing interest to be based on a public call out for interested volunteer...
How did they know it was gonna be a public call out?
Well, we didn't know there was a public, we, we're supposed to public call out.
Who told them it was gonna be a public call out?
There, there was, and names were written into council, it was all done according to the rule.
I never heard of that.
Well, I can't help that.
Oh, of course, of course!
It's not public!
It was published, it was published. Come on, guys, let's keep it true, hey?
Oh, I thought it was Matthew, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. There was also Matthew, uh, Johnson. His name was on the list.
Was it?
So, to be, well, was, yes, on the original list, so, we have some people who've removed, and I'm reading out the remaining names to be considered based on the application for... Would you like to remove your name, Matthew?
Yeah, this is, this is a circus, yeah, absolutely. I don't wanna be aligned with anything to do with this town. This is ridiculous. Early embarrassment.
This is an interim board, this is an interim board for, until we put on, that was the names we have.
No vetting at all, absolutely no vetting at all, just...
No questions for that?
They can sit on the board and do what they want.
David, David, no, no more questions from the audience, we're trying to finish this meeting. Uh, Angela, you have the floor.
Sorry, Councilor Gortliez.
I'd like to nominate David, maybe, if you like.
No, no, no. This dysfunctional train wreck is not going near me.
No, no, in that, you don't know why the last ones were fired, Dave, so you gotta watch your step.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I only read a hundred and forty-two books last year, that would probably disqualify me.
You have to be able to paint, David, you have to be able to paint.
You have to be an artist, you have to be an artist, David.
That means...
I published two books, but that's...
Order.
Three members of the public, it will four, not these four members of the public, I will repeat them, plus Councilor Wilcox, Sabrina Summersaw, Joanne Beeson, Colleen McNaught, Jennifer Pereira, and Douglas Wilcox. That is the five minimum, now, there is discussion, we do not have to appoint any of these people, but we do need five, as an option, we can put up to one other municipal councillor to make up the five in the interim on this board.
Doug can't, he counted, he's a councillor.
Would anybody else like to volunteer on council?
How can Doug be counted, he's a councillor?
There are five, including at least one from council.
Colleen and Joanne are here.
I would throw my application in.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's the library board liaison up on council right now, Angela? Tell me. Tell me!
Doug counts as one of the five.
Who's the liaison person for council?
Enough, David, enough.
Well, we're not getting, we're not getting straight answers.
Go.
No, I'm not going.
Kinda chance.
Call it, please.
Call it, please, you see him right here? Go, go call it, please, go call it, please, you're gonna see what's gonna be in the paper next week.
People move to council because you're firing the volunteers, that's ridiculous.
You're the library board liaison person, you cannot be, uh, nominated for the library board. You can't! Come on! It doesn't add up, you know? I failed math, but I can still, I can still count!
The bylaw reads that council, council will appoint a councillor to the library board, he will be a member...
You resigned as a lever board liaison.
I'm already there.
You've, you've resigned as the library board liaison person.
And council...
That's fine, I just wanna know that, I just wanna know if you resigned.
Another problem.
No, I have not resigned.
He's a big part of the problem.
Yeah.
He didn't get a letter.
No, he already did.
He didn't get a letter, he didn't.
You sent a letter to the library board, so you're...
Come on, guys.
Yeah.
Councillor.
Under...
Well, no, no, the mayor's wife.
I think I find things, we need to, we're so...
Yeah, yeah. And that historic collection...
Jennifer Pereira, and two councillors, and Joanne Beeson, and Sabrina Summersaw.
Okay, that's fine.
Joanne has left the board.
Is she here?
Yeah, they are, right there. Joanne Beeson and Colleen McNaught, two of the finest Cobalters you can ever meet anywhere. With line on the board! Your jersey has changed, you know?
No, I'm asking Colleen, and she's, did you wanna serve on the interim board, Colleen?
She just said no!
I was, I stood up and withdrew.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, Colleen, I heard, Joanne? No?
No.
And the way the mayor treated the Golden Age Club as well, is horrific.
They're next.
Let's get the truth though.
A bully mayor.
Yeah, the mayor did nothing to mistreat the Golden Age Club.
Oh, that's.
Oh.
So, council, I would send a motion for coastal. That a motion that. I can't be this loud, you think.
Now, it's been 60 years since we had a circus in Cobalt. Good day to everyone.
With the CEO running things.
Do you like reading?
I don't think, I don't think too, well, you know, we need a full five before we reestablish it. Good luck. Yeah. Yeah, good luck.
No, guys.
And they have the qualifications that we don't.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
They, they can't do a council meeting if everybody keeps interjecting. So honestly, only because we want to finish the meeting, I will ask you all to, Dave, if you keep interrupting.
And with who wants to sort this out?
And when you interrupt and we can't hear each other, it isn't gonna happen. So I'm asking you to please be quiet.
So, councilor Wilcox, given that the initial motion was that we reappoint the existing board who chose not to accept that and therefore that motion was withdrawn and that we have insufficient volunteers therefore who would like to run the library at this time, we're motioning that the library continue under the supervision in the interim, in the interim under the supervision of the EO, our, our town manager, CEO.
Might I suggest that we readvertise for volunteers for the interim board?
Oh, for then who runs in the interim?
If we have one more name or less, you know, so let's advertise for someone.
I'm sure Janet might have.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We'll have to post it and we've already got an opportunity to name it. Just as we get to the original circulation.
And would that time not be the same as just drafting the bylaw so they know what they're getting into, which is the one point of the interim?
Well, we can be doing that at the same time and hopefully. And we did say, I can do think in the bylaws, reappointing the bylaw. Currently us. Currently Steve.
This is a joke.
It's fly by your seat and it's a pants, you know? They don't know what they're doing. Making it up as they go along. Matt? They're making it up as they go along.
Is that agreed?
Yes.
So I have a motion that the, uh, library will be supervised by our CEO uh, until such time as we are able to fill the interim director vacancy. Okay? So, could I have a mover? Moved by Harry and Gary. All in favor? Any discussion? Sorry. All in favor? Motion carried. And I believe that brings us to my favorite motion. That brings us to adjournment. Be resolved in this special meeting of council, the adjournment at nine thirty-four. DM, a mover? Move by.
Thank you for being an embarrassment to my town.
Steve, sorry.